All right, I'd like to bring order the town of Cordera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, starting at six thirty P. M. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa. Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. Can we do a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on, this is an open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item at the time it is called. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment not on the agenda? Seeing none in the chamber?
We received a public comment via email that was forwarded to council and it is available on the website. And on Zoom, we have one hand raised from Patty Stoller.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to invite everyone in Cordera Madera and beyond to come celebrate on Sunday, our non-agenarians and centenarians. We have been doing this in Concert with Age Friendly Corner. Oh, good, good, you've got your invitation. In Concert with Age Friendly Cordera and the Town of Cordera for, this will be our ninth year. During the shutdown, we went to their doors and delivered gifts and certificates and appreciation to all the people at their doors. But this is the first time we're back in person with the portrait photographer and the pianist and all the wonderful things. So please bring your neighbors, have everybody come and celebrate these amazing people on Sunday, the twentieth, at two thirty at the rec center.
Thanks.
Thank you for that, Patty.
We don't have any other hands raised at this time.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and move to item number three, which is presentations, which we have none. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff and public may request removal of an item for discussion. Is there anyone on the council that would like to move an item? Is there anyone in the public that would like to remove an item? Is there anyone from staff? No, seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll move items four A through four D.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
And that concludes the consent calendar, so we'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing five A, this is the first reading and possible introduction of ordinance amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation. Is there a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Me and Honorable Members of the Council, Amy Ackerman, Town Attorney. In the process of drafting our reusable foodware ordinance, I came across chapter six point one two, which is outdated and obsolete to this required deposits on recycling, refillable and required refillable beverage containers. Cordera, as is often the case, was well ahead of the state and passed their ordinance. And a number of years later, the state passed a comprehensive law regarding recycling reuse and occupied the fields, which prevents Cordera from enforcing its law. And Cordera doesn't need to enforce its law because the state does enforce it. So what we're just asking tonight is to introduce this ordinance to repeal chapter six point one two because it's no longer needed nor is it enforceable.
Okay. So does that conclude your discussion? All right, so is there any questions regarding that?
Just one quick question, it's more for Adam. Do you know, are you going through a process if there's anything else that's old out there? Because I can't remember if you were at one time just trying to pick up, instead of trying to find the stuff, trial and error, like something happened and we look at.
We haven't done a comprehensive review. We know there are a lot of things. We've done that from time to time with the zoning ordinance, but not with the entire municipal code. So it's something that we can discuss perhaps as part of the next work plan and do that cleanup and remove, I like to say, it's nice when you can actually make the municipal code smaller rather than sort of continue to expand it. So but we can take direction from council on that in the future.
Okay, thanks, one other way to look at it, you may want to go back and look, is there anything older than like nineteen eighty? And then you kind of worked your way backward and started.
That's age ordinance discrimination. Some of the best laws are the oldest that humanity came up with.
Is there any questions over here? Okay, so with that, I'll close a question and open it up to the public. Is there any public comment on this item? One online?
We don't have any public comment for this item.
All right, so I'll close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Is there anyone that has any discussion points? I wanted to add, just to the council where and just in general to get it off my chest. I mean, I think that this is a great thing for policy to go back and do this. I was telling Adam yesterday when this came on that, you know, if I ever went to a larger body, decision-making body, I think one of the legacies that I would want to leave behind is like a reduction of ordinances and enforced actions that were basically either enforceable, outdated or overbearing, right? Like, so I really appreciate that I and that understanding from a policy execution standpoint. You know, I'm also interested in AI and like I've often thought as a data set, the municipal ordinance and the ability for it to synthesize between that smaller data set and then apply it to state and federal laws and try to make interpretive understanding. So that I understand lawyers or anybody else can do that too. But as a way at the smaller level of a town municipality to think about that comprehensively and just get like a checklist of maybe touchpoints to consider with a resident expert might be an interesting task case for me personally, like whether the town council is interested in that or whether there's actually even a legitimate way to do that currently and the evolution of that. But like, I just wanted to share that thought with everyone. So, yeah, and as far as this, do you need any kind of vote or acceptance on it? So we would need a motion for the first, okay?
Correct.
So is everyone coming along and making the introduction?
I'll move to introduce the ordinance as described.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
All right, so looking to close the public hearings and move to the business items. Business item six A is to receive presentations and discuss two items. State pro housing designation program and to the Association of Bay Area Government and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's Priority Sites Program and provide possible direction to pursue a priority site nomination. Is there a presentation?
There is, I'm going to start and we'll have some additional speakers, including Martha as well as. And so, good evening, Mayor and council members. This item is really a follow-up to the June twentieth town council meeting where the town council adopted its housing element and requested that staff come back to the town council with additional information regarding the pro housing designation. And at that time, we weren't really focused on this priority site designation, which is a different program, but we thought this would be a good opportunity to discuss both programs, they're distinct and separate programs. And the priority site designation, that one is a little bit more time sensitive with applications needing to be filed by the end of September. So this is a good opportunity to get some more information regarding that. We are going to discuss this in two different sections. Going to first discuss the priority sites program and I'm really thankful that Mark Short from the Association of Bay Area Governments is here this evening to provide a presentation on the priority sites designation program, which is an A-bag MTC program. Pro Housing is an HCD program and all the acronyms. We'll get into the pro housing in section two. And so we're asking really on the first part of this for some direction regarding priority sites. And at the end of this, we'll sort of stop and have that discussion here. Any questions from the council or others from the public, I think, on that first part, the party sites, sites program, and then go into pro housing for the second part of this item. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Mark Short, who's really the expert on this program. And thank you again, Mark, for being here. And I believe Mark will be available for questions at the end of the presentation as well.
Yes, thank you so much and good evening, council members. Thanks for the opportunity to join. So maybe we can go to the next slide. I'll start my video, okay, all right. Yeah, so we can go to the next slide, I'll give a quick intro to this program. So the priority sites program was created really in recognition of the fact that you, like a lot of other jurisdictions in the region, have had a particularly complex and challenging housing element process. And coupled with that, at the regional level, we've been putting together regional land use and transportation plans for about the last twelve years. And the most recent one was Plan Bay Area two thousand and fifty. So when you take Plan Bay Area two thousand and fifty, which is a regional land use and transportation plan, which, you know, is intended to kind of lift up and pull together local priorities and your local housing elements, what we wanted to do at the regional level was see if there might be an opportunity for us to, you know, beyond the sort of mandates you get from the state and you get from other folks, really try to provide some technical assistance and resources to help advance the development of those key sites that you and other communities throughout the Bay Area have identified. So if we go to the next slide, I can provide a quick overview. And so this slide and the diagram on it shows a set of steps which are essentially the timeline or the sort of flow of the priority sites program. And on the left, you have established sites and pipeline going all over to all the way over to the right, which is future success. So when we say establish six sites and pipeline, you know, what are we talking about there? The idea there is to get a set of nominations from local governments throughout the region. And we'll talk about what the criteria are in the next slide and get some information from you about the stage of those key sites. So let's suppose you've nominated, you have a site in your housing element, but you've just started thinking about it. You know, you don't have a, there isn't necessarily a developer onboard for the site, but you're going to do the rezoning and maybe if it's a publicly owned parcel, you need to do some analysis in order to get it ready for an RFP. So that's where we are going to provide some technical assistance. And there's a host of other potential needs, we might be able to try to meet with that technical assistance. Now, let's suppose you have a site and, you know, it's already entitled, there's already a developer onboard, but there's kind of a gap with respect to pre-development funding. We also are going to have a pilot program that can provide funding to those projects coming up later this year. So when you take those two things, those are two of the ways in which we're going to try to support these sites that are nominated. And then thinking a little bit more long-term, these sites are also going to have the ability to be supported through resources that come out of our regional transportation plan and sustainable community strategy, Plan Bay Area. And the next iteration of that plan, Plan Bay Area two thousand and fifty plus is expected for adoption roughly in two thousand and twenty-five. So there's some, in addition to the two things I just talked about, the pilot funding and technical assistance, there's additional resources in those in that plan that typically would support things like infrastructure and planning. And then also, you know, five is a more general statement here about future success. But I think what we want to do as a program is help connect the sites that are nominated with any expanded resources that become available at the state level as well as at the regional level. If there's a successful two thousand and twenty-four housing measure, we'll have this pipeline and sites and set of local priorities. And that'll sort of help set the stage for how some of those initial funds might roll out. And of course, a lot of that would be administered at the county level. And so the key, there's a key coordination piece here, which we have started to engage with the county around. So if we can go to the next slide, let's go into the nomination window. The close of this is the end of September, so next month. And we talked about kind of the intention of this nomination period. But I think an important piece to convey here is the idea is for these sites, we want to make the application process and nomination process kind of as simple as possible. So we're asking for some sort of basic background information. But we really also want to understand what the fund, any funding gaps are as well as the technical assistance needs. So there's a nomination that, a nomination form that I know your staff has looked at and, you know, is something that we can help them or work through as well as answer any questions that you might have. If we go to the next slide, we can go through the eligibility criteria. So applicants for priority sites, local government like yourself, or if there's already an entitled project, it could be a developer. The location, there's a set of growth geographies in Plan Bay Area two thousand and fifty. These are places with access to high-quality transit or places with, that are categorized as high resource areas. So I know, having talked to your staff, there's a couple of sites that have been identified, which are in a qualifying geographic area. The other, another piece of information that we're looking for here to get in the nomination is what the sort of commitment is on the part of the city to maximize the share of affordable units. We don't have an exact percentage or set number because we want to provide some flexibility, but that's, I think, a piece of information that we're also looking to assemble some background on. So next slide, please. And there's three types of priority sites. So a site can meet any of these three criteria. And if it meets the eligibility criteria on the previous slide, it'll qualify. So regionally significant sites, capacity for at least five hundred homes, a community anchor, capacity for at least a hundred homes and at least ten thousand square feet of community serving uses. And that can be anything from, you know, a park that serves the surrounding community to a clinic or an active use on the ground floor of a mixed-use project. Public sites portfolio is another category that could be multiple sites owned by a local jurisdiction that you're looking at collectively planning for and redeveloping. That would have a total capacity for two hundred units. So we talk about total capacity, it's, you know, the maximum that you could do under zoning or under rezoning. And it's different than the, you know, the realistic capacity, which is, you know, the housing element term. Let's go to the next slide. And this slide is intended to provide a few examples of, you know, what a regionally significant site might be, a community anchor, a public sites portfolio might look like. And, you know, you can see kind of a larger scale examples for the regionally significant sites. We have an example here of a county airport or an aging shopping center. I know there's some of those in Cordera Madera. Community anchor, you know, it could be a cultural center, community anchor could also be commercial use right now that's also planned to have a, you know, additional component, which is community serving. And then an example, public sites portfolio that we've encountered with a number of jurisdictions throughout the region is a scattered site, scattered set of publicly owned parking lots. Next slide, please. So we started by talking about sort of providing overview of the program. And I think we'll wrap up with that as well, starting with, on the left, with establishing the sites and kind of the pipeline of the site, so we understand, you know, how far along the planning is for each of these sites. And then, you know, moving right ahead, after we get all the nominations in in September, if the sites are, if you have a site that, where there's an entitled project, it's almost ready to go, but there's a funding gap, there'll be pilot funding available there, which will be about twenty-eight million dollars and that'll pretty much support pre-development funding. And then sites where they're a little bit, not quite to that point yet, where you need some technical assistance, we're going to have that rolling out as well. So both of these were our goal is to have this funding start to come out later this year, early next calendar year. And then all sites are going to be included in future plan and any additional incentives or resources that are associated with these as priorities in the next plan. Next slide, please. So with that, I'll, I believe I'm going to turn it over to Martha. And again, thanks for the opportunity to join. And I think once, once she's done, I'll be happy to answer any questions unless we're going to do questions now.
Thank you, Mark. I think our thoughts were we'll go over the two sites that we've identified as potentially community, community anchor sites and then open it up for, for questions. So as the town council knows, the housing element was recently adopted in June. And as part of that, several sites were rezoned to allow additional housing units. And staff has identified two potential sites that could qualify as a community anchor. The first is Housing Element Site Three. The site is comprised of four contiguous parcels that are all under a single ownership. The site is just under three and a half acres. And it is currently developed with a mix of retail, office and a gym. The site was rezoned to the Housing Element Two Overlay District back in, in January. And as part of that, the allowable density was increased to thirty-five units an acre. The realistic development capacity for the site is a hundred and twenty units and approximately thirty thousand square feet of commercial. And this site includes both the minimum and a maximum percentage of non-residential square footage in addition to those, those housing units. And the property owner has indicated that he is interested in redeveloping the site in the future with a mixed-use housing project and maintaining the gym use. Next slide. The second site that's been identified is Housing Element Site Five. This is located at fourteen hundred Redwood Highway, which is developed with the existing Macy's retail and a large parking lot. It is just under seven and a half acres and was recently rezoned to the HE three overlay, which allows forty dwelling units an acre. This site also includes both a minimum and maximum square footage of non-residential use as well. So the realistic capacity for this site is three hundred residential units and just over a hundred thousand square feet of commercial uses. And next slide. So staff has identified two options for the council's consideration this evening. The first is to direct staff to pursue a priority sites nomination by the deadline. Staff has reached out to both property owners of these sites and provided the agenda for tonight's meeting and also the staff report that was prepared. And they may even be on the call as well, listening. The second option would be to request that staff take no action at this time. So that concludes presentation unless Adam wants to add anything and we're available for questions.
Yeah, I think, I think just in our own conversations with both property owners of these sites, I think there is some clear opportunities for additional funding that would help facilitate development on those sites. And whether that's pre-development funding or technical assistance, I mean, that's something that would likely be discussed with the property owners before applying. If that was sort of the direction that we received tonight, we would obviously go back to the property owners, have those discussions and then ultimately put forth the most sort of a, an application that requests sort of the type of funding that would be most appropriate for the facilitation of, of housing or just moving the process along in the right direction to get sort of movement on those potential redevelopment sites in consultation with the property owner. So, you know, again, that's, just wanted to make that clear. These sort of sites in, in speaking in our analysis or preliminary analysis, not only meet the qualification or the criteria from the program, but also are sort of ready from the developer's standpoint to sort of act on this and make some progress. So, thank you.
Okay, does that conclude the presentation? Great, does council have questions?
Thank you both for the presentation. Very interesting and exciting. I have a few questions. So first, could you define what technical assistance entails? What type of services fall under that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to address that. So we are currently looking to, you know, define the exact details of what the technical assistance would include based on what we get through the nominations. But there is sort of a general universe of what that could include. And so a couple of examples of that would be conceptual planning to help inform a development proposal, environmental site assessments to ensure there are no issues with respect to toxic materials, et cetera. Architecture and engineering work as well. So that's the, the sort of the set of activities that one might envision under technical assistance. And depending on whether it's a public or private owner, there might be, you know, a need for some additional market analysis and that would be sort of another example.
Um, might it also include assistance for the towns with staffing to administer administrative help with the program?
I think we would consider that as well. And that's, that'll be helpful to have as a, you know, if we get a nomination from Cordera Madera, having that indicated as one of the needs for the particular site, then that will help shape the program. That is something that we have supported through other programs. So that would be useful as, as input for us, to us.
Great, thank you, thank you. And I heard an amount of twenty-eight million. Can you explain what, was that specific to any project or is it, is that the pot of money?
So we have, if you think about the short-term funding opportunities for the sites that are nominated, there are sort of two pots. There's the twenty-eight million dollars that you were just asking about. And that is funding that will be available for pre-development and those will likely be low-interest loans for entitled projects or projects that have a clear path to entitlement. In addition to that, we have technical assistance. And that funding, you know, that can be provided through our staffing program, that can be provided through over a million dollars that we've also kind of secured for this. And that goes to those particular things that you had just asked about when, when we talk about technical assistance. So those are kind of two, two near-term pools. So I would not describe those as sort of the end-all be-all though of the available funding because part of what we're doing on a continual basis is sort of looking for opportunities as state and federal funding becomes available. So based on what we hear in terms of the need that helps inform us in terms of what additional resources to help try to acquire.
Then for the, the owners that you all have been in touch with, I'm just wondering if these projects would, at this point, only really qualify for sort of the technical assistance piece, is that correct?
Yeah, a little bit more learning as well as we go at understanding this, this program. But it appears that that would be the case, they're not entitled projects at this point. They're really just in conceptual phase. So I, I would assume that would be the case.
And then as they would move along, like, once they got out of the kickstart and a little further along to actual development and developing plans, is there still money available through this, this program?
Yeah, maybe, Mark, I, I, Mark, it seems to me that's what you were referencing, that potentially down the road as maybe related to other
cycle.
Yeah.
Infrastructure needs or other types of funding becomes available from the state, you would sort of try to funnel those to already selected priority sites? Or at least they would have preference or something like that? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And there's, we have, having had a sort of a tool, when we get a pool of sites nominated, that will sort of provide the basis for identifying need. And that could be beyond what we have currently available that we would have as the priority for additional resources that we would, you know, acquire or try to acquire from a state or other sources. And in addition to that, you know, and this gets to the timeline for a project. If a project is earlier on, there's a technical assistance need. And through that technical assistance, the project moves to a point where it's able to be entitled. And maybe it's ready to get, it needs some funding for infrastructure or more detailed planning. I think that will be well aligned with the net, the adoption of the next plan, which is expected in 2025. And there's additional resources associated with that plan, as well as potentially, I was mentioning Regional Housing Bond, which could potentially be on the 2024 ballot. And so, you know, additional resources which come along. So if we think about where something is in the pipeline, as it moves along, the goal is to try to support the project at different points.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, I have just a, a couple of questions. One of them was already answered by, or asked by Rosa. So I saw that part of the criteria was that the development was maximizing the share of affordable units. And I'm just wondering, I don't know whether the question is from Adam or for Adam or you, but how do we do that? I mean, you have a developer coming in who wants to minimize that in order to maximize his profit. So where does the town have leverage in that regard?
I'll, I'll start by saying that the town's has an inclusionary zoning ordinance that requires a minimum percentage be affordable at different income levels. And our current, current ordinance was amended about a year and a half ago, when the requirement is 20% of all units are required to be set aside for affordable. So we would need to discuss with, with Mark and other staff if that is adequate for, to qualify for, for this program.
Yeah. And one other way that, you know, is, is also as part of that ordinance that was amended, there is also a, actually, I think it already was permitted, but the town does hold an affordable housing fund as well, which has been accumulating slowly. And I think in the future, it'll accumulate more rapidly with the, with the updated sort of rates that were adopted and approved by the council. But there's about, I think, $580,000 in there now. That's potentially one opportunity that I know other, the county, as for example, offered up to increase or deepen the affordability levels. That being said, you know, I'm not sure, depending on the size, if these are large projects, $580,000 is not a significant amount of money to go too deep. But perhaps that is what A-Bag is sort of, Mark, I'll hand it to you if, if that's the type of thing that you're thinking of, sort of towns and cities sort of pitching in in that regard.
Yeah, I think that it's both of the things that you just mentioned, actually. You know, it's having, it's having, to the extent there's an inclusionary requirement in place that the project, you know, hits the inclusionary. And then if there's the ability to do something on top of that, and perhaps that's assisted by the city or additional resources that are made available, then, you know, I think that would clearly be maximizing the share of affordable housing. I mean, one of the, one of the things to be recognized, and this is the reason there's not a percentage there, like 25%, 30%, et cetera, is that it's not possible to say sort of upfront exactly what the percentage is going to be. But through this type of program, if there's, if there's a city, if there's communities like the town that have, you know, policies in place that are, they're really trying to support affordability. And I think that's clear by what Adam just described. You know, we want to help provide additional incentives for those projects to kind of push as far as they can. And it may be the case that they're not way above 20%. But from the perspective of getting the pool of eligible sites, I think that what, what's been described certainly meets the, the criteria.
And what about two, two questions? One is workforce housing. Is there any incentive for that designation? And then also regarding the size of units? We all sort of know that smaller units are inherently more affordable. Are those considerations?
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, we've intended with the, the criteria to keep it sort of open enough that all of that could be accommodated within the criteria. Like a site could, some, something that pursues those goals you just described or those approaches you just described could be possible on the sites. I think what, I think as we design the, the program and provide the technical assistance and additional funding, it'll be, it'll be great to have, you know, the ideas from around the region sort of introduced for pursuing particular innovative approaches or particular approaches that will achieve goals. So I think in, in, in thinking about the type of efforts that we're going to be looking to support, it's sort of what you were just describing. It's, it's efforts that, that try to take a really informed and tailored approach.
Okay. And then just one more sort of area. The example that you gave, which I thought was really nice, referenced a cultural center and community amenities. And we're designating commercial as a, as, as what that is. But is there a greater value in A-Bag's mind to more cultural and community-type facilities? And how do we make those things happen rather than just regular commercial designations?
Yeah, I think that that's, that's always definitely a challenge, particularly with a, you know, privately owned parcel too, right? But there are, there have been instances, though, where, and I was, I was talking to someone Sunday about this recently, where, you know, you'll have a, I don't know what the, the challenge requirements are, but, you know, they've been requiring ground floor retail. And the developer actually doesn't want to build the ground floor retail. So they're sort of setting it aside. And there's a community use that goes in and uses the ground floor retail. So it's sort of part of their developer contribution. I'm not suggesting that's like a policy solution that works everywhere. But I'm sort of intending to recognize the complexity or challenge here. And, you know, that's one sort of approach that, that we've heard about. I think that from the perspective of increasing, you know, mobility options and making it easier for people to reach their daily destinations, there could be a benefit to retail uses as well, right? But I think to the extent there, there are like truly community-serving uses, then, you know, there's definitely like a, an upside to that as well. And hopefully we can think about if, if there's service providers in the county that, that needs space and there's a project that will have space available. I think connecting those two things is sort of the ideal, sort of the ideal world.
So that would get our application better received if it were involving more cultural and community amenities?
So I don't think it'd be required from an eligibility standpoint. I think when, with respect to, you know, funding, I think it would be, it might put it in a competitive position at that point. But as far as eligibility, we're trying to sort of leave it open. And, you know, through some of the programs, we can try to incentivize that type of project.
Great. And just one more, if I may. So if we go through this and we get the designation, what are the obligations of the town at that point? To deliver?
Actually, don't have any obligations. And I, I always feel strange saying that because I'm like, you know, there's always some regional obligation. I know we've had a lot of obligations sort of passed along fade or us, et cetera. But I think in this case, we're really, I can honestly say there's no, there's no obligations associated. Sort of more trying to lift up the, your, your priorities more than anything else. And then create, looking ahead, opportunities. Because I know there have been obligations, so.
That's really refreshing to hear. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, your wealth of information, by the way. And staff is great also. I'm trying to get just an understanding of the process more from the developer side of it. So just say tonight, we go ahead and approve it, submitting the applications. They get submitted to you guys. You guys go ahead and just say approve them. Does a developer have X amount of time to submit? Concept, just say, and there's no entitlements. Do they have X amount of time to submit, say, conceptual drawings? And do those drawings get submitted to the town then? How, how does that process work?
Yeah, so that, you know, the nomination process in, you know, particularly if it's not an entitled project, is coming through the town. So if it's eligible, it'll get approved. And then the development review process, for example, if there's conceptual drawings that are, that are coming in and there's a project proposal. I mean, that definitely, that still stays within the town's, like 100% within the town's control. So the town's reviewing it, the town decides whether that, you know, meets your development criteria or not. And if there's a role that the program can play in helping support that review or supporting, you know, work you want to support the developer in doing, then I think that's where it's sort of, it adds value there. But where the nomination meeting the criteria will be based on what, you know, what we receive from the town. I don't know if that answers the question, though, let me make sure it does.
Yeah, again, I'm just trying to get understanding, follow up question that. Is there a timeline for this? If these projects get approved, is there a timeline that, again, I just go back to conceptual drawings? Because I know the owners may like this idea, it's just, I don't know what's in process. You know, do they have like two years to go ahead and start working with the town to submit conceptual drawings? Because again, these projects are huge and they're going to take time.
Yeah, no, there isn't kind of a timeline or cutoff for the projects that are, that are nominated, or the sites that are nominated and projects on those sites. I think you could think of it as a pipeline and maybe the project, some projects will move fast, some projects will move slow. But the goal is to have this pipeline sort of around for a while and not to sort of put a time constraint on the, on activity on the sites that are, you know, within the program and have been nominated, recognizing that the timeline is really going to vary.
Okay. And then I'm still on the technical assistance, because again, the way these, where these projects are. Does that mean that you, that you would be providing actual funding to the town or to the developer? Again, to say, did you conceptual drawings?
Yeah, the funding, the funding can go to, you know, I think there, there's a couple of different ways we could do it. And I think it'd be useful, it'd be interesting to get, you know, input in the nomination on this in terms of who receives the funding or how exactly what the, the delivery model is. You know, one approach that we've done for a number of regional programs is we have, you know, a, a set of consultants that are already on contract. And the town or developer through the town can indicate, okay, we need these particular services. And then we can have the consultant deliver it like through a contract with us. On the other hand, there could also be a sort of a pass-through grant to, to the city as well. I think those would be the, the examples I would give. There also could be an example where a developer could, if they already have an entitled project, for example, potentially apply for, you know, loan as well. That would be a little bit, I think, down the road if a project's pretty early on. But that, that would be the, the example where I could imagine it going directly to, to the developer.
Okay. And then as these processes move through, what you're calling the pipeline, they get kind of past the technical assistance point. And then if they get entitlements, now they're into the funding. So that goes a different path?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I had another developer question, but I just, I couldn't remember. I'll go ahead and turn over the ID, come back to you. Thanks.
All my questions have already been answered. Thank you.
I'm sorry, do you mind just have one more?
I don't mind.
Just thought of. Is it, when a developer, when you apply for these, is a developer, is there a commitment from the developer to actually build out these projects? Is there anything built into the process? Or is it just, in other words, can they just do the conceptual design? And then two years from now go, hey, not economically feasible. So whether they're going to hold off or not proceed?
And I think if it's a grant, it's, you know, it, it ends up being very challenging to have a requirement that the development actually precedes. So I think that ends up being a, something tricky to, to sort of implement. You know, we could put, we haven't, we haven't contemplated whether there should be like a clawback mechanism or something, and we would enter, I definitely would entertain any ideas on that. If, if it were to, if the project were further along and there were loans, and I, I, I really shouldn't speculate on exactly what the terms would be. I would think my colleagues at the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority probably be best suited to speak on this. But I know there are ways in which they would build into the loan, you know, a, a timeline that involved actual commencement of construction likely.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So on the website or just available, do you have some kind of schedule or understanding of the timelines outside of the September 30th? There is the program so fast-tracked and basically, you know, trying to get these applications and succeed in, in building these, that there isn't like a more detailed information? Because a lot of the questions I had heard are related to that. Some of the things is like, is the consideration an annual re-rolling over cycle? Or is it just this one-time cycle, one-time funding with another, within that pipeline already established? You know, another funding mechanism is going to come in a year or two, right? Like, it's, for me, it's still a little unclear.
Yeah, yeah, I see why, I see why you might feel that way too. It makes sense. It's, it's, it's essentially the, the second, what you just described, which is that we're doing the nominations at this point. And this is, and, and, you know, if we're going to be in a, if the, the next nomination period, I would anticipate would probably be about four years from now because it's sort of intended to align with the regional, regional planning process.
Okay.
And then, you know, you establish the sites. And then if additional resources, when additional resources are available, they support those sites that are nominated, you know, by the end of September. But I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not completely answering your question regarding exactly what the, the detail, a more detailed timeline would be. And, you know, that's because we don't have an exact benchmark for, you know, in 2020, 2024, Q3, we don't have exactly the, the.
That is an answer, right? Like, what I hear is that would be useful for us to really, and part of it is, is the council's task with thinking about the long-term planning of the town. And so some of the considerations and questions we may ask might not even relate to these two. But just in general, like the town goals for the long term, right?
Makes sense.
And so to, to that, you know, I, I definitely wanted to ask about the, the public properties. So like, you know, I think when you answered previously, it was this idea that they, the two sites we currently have are privately owned, right? But we have, we do have town facilities, right? The town-owned projects, and that's where it's, the community one might be applicable far into the future. But I think without understanding whether this is an annual cyclical project or a one, two punch, and then it falls off, right? Like, is this going to be something that the town can look forward in the, in the long term as, as kind of a support and funding mechanism for these types of approaches at the state level, right? From a policy standpoint? This is, is another thing that I, I think would be helpful for us to understand.
Yeah, that, that's certainly the intention of, of the program. And that's, you know, when it was, when it was established by the, the regional level, by the commission and the A-Bag Executive Board, the goal was to make it a longer-term set of supports for these, you know, sites that you would nominate now. And, and it would roll over essentially every year. Now, in terms of adding new sites, I don't, I would think that would be a few years into the future as opposed to like an annual nomination.
Well, and that, that was part of the like little nuanced part, peel off of that question is, you know, if other, let's say, it's not even our community, just as a matter of curiosity. If there's an application, there's some things that are thrown in that are already approved. If, are, is there a capacity to basically do an addendum to that to then throw in more opportunity sites and have that reviewed and just pulled in once it's already accepted, right? Related to maybe town.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Because if it's not annually redone and it's three years on this one, basically, in my mind, up. Yeah, because if it's not annually redone and it's three years on this one, basically, in my mind, a permit application, right? Like, can you basically do a an addendum to that to kind of update and and nuance, like add to it? Because, you know, or something like that. Is there a mechanism for that? Do you anticipate that that could be done if that was the council's interest, right?
Yeah, I think we could. So one of the things we can do with these program, with this program, it's a new program. And as we hear, you know, ideas like what you just proposed, we can, we can make, we can propose that there be an opportunity to have amendments to, for example. And I think that's a really good specific example that make has a good logic behind it, right? Like you have your publicly owned sites, the the town owns all these sites. They want to add a site because they're still thinking of it as part of the portfolio. I mean, that that's the type of thing that we would, I think we could consider. So I appreciate, I really appreciate the that being suggested.
Yeah, well, not suggested yet because.
Or or.
I just asked it as a question.
Hypothetized.
Yeah. And 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 I think that's important to understand because it tied to, you know, workforce housing. And then and then tied to that, there are different funding mechanisms within that. So it's you have specific dollars assigned, but you also referred to the Baja, the Bay Area Housing Authority. Right? Is are they the actual funding mechanism and you're in alignment as two separate groups? Or are they the stakeholder that basically gives feedback as far as the feasibility? Or can you explain that relationship a little bit more?
Yeah, so so the the as a as a organization and as a staff, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority and, you know, MDC and ABAG are all kind of one staff that serves all of those, you know, individual entities, right? So we all, you know, and why don't we just like integrate them and call them one thing, right? That would, I mean, that that's something people have been talking about, but we have, those are, those are the three sort of entities that that we are, we are serving. And the relationship between the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority and this program specifically is that to the extent that there is, there are loan products or things that I think more more traditionally go through a housing, housing finance authority. They will be administering those and they'll be doing like due diligence and et cetera. And and I think a real huge benefit, though, is that on even technical assistance pieces, they'll be able to provide staff from Bay Area Housing Finance Authority will be able to provide, you know, their insight on what would make the project more successful and better lined up for funding sources.
Fantastic. Thank you. That's all my questions. So is there any other follow up questions? Okay, so we'll close council questioning and open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there anyone online?
We have one hand raised from Johnson Reynolds.
Thank you. I'm Johnson Reynolds. I have a condominium in the canal. Right now I'm in Maui because my sister's sick and spending time with her on the train in September. And I'm part of MOC and I'm, we're, I'm part of other ME, you know, Marin Environmental Housing Corporation. We're concerned, of course, this is a conceptual thing. This is something going to happen eventually. But, you know, we're always like yourselves, talking about workforce housing and and service workers housing. Those are important, that affordability for people that make very low income as well as workforce. That's very important. And I'm glad to hear there's a possibility of two places, the Martin Macy Center and and the one in Piper. But, you know, and other options too. And of course, we we've been talking about the the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, which has to be passed in 2024. So that's not definite yet, but whatever, whenever conceptually you can do to provide the affordable housing for people who work here but don't live here, that's important. The workforce, but the service workers, the gardeners, the childcare workers, the food service workers, as well as environment and police and so on and so forth. And I'm sure that's a situation in Corredamadera as well as the other jurisdictions. So I I I appreciate this and let's move forward with it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And see. We don't have any other hands raised. And we don't have email public comment on this item either.
Okay, so with that, we'll close public comment. We'll bring it back to council discussion. This is only item one, correct? And direction for this? And then and then would you also then like to have a discussion after we resolve this for two? And and, okay. All right. So discussion points on this and then we're looking for direction to staff to proceed with moving forward with a potential application, right? If if determined by the council. Okay.
Correct. And we we termed it as pursue because there's still more work that we would staff would need to do, but that would help us.
Well, I'm I'm very supportive. Love the idea of getting additional assistance upfront. I think that's always the challenge in terms of, I know Corredamadera is looking for really good quality architecture and design. And I think that getting that assistance upfront could be a a key part of that. So very supportive. And I know our staff will do a great application that you won't be able to resist.
Sure. Is this pro housing or is this priority sites?
This is priority sites.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, I I think this is fantastic. I think the potential benefit of, you know, redevelopment of these sites is huge. And I think the two sites that staff has picked are fantastic. Definitely support applying for both or rather, you know, I'd love to see us approach the property owners who I know are already in contact with. And of course, if they're amenable, I think we should collaborate with them on submitting applications. So very excited. Thank you.
Yes, I think this is a really positive step. If we could make the recommendation and application. I would say, and it's probably early to say, but I hope that if in fact there isn't, there aren't, you know, specific obligations from ABAG and from the the grant that the town would hold some. Because I would really hate to see money gone, but projects not finished. And so I think that, you know, that is a really important place where the technical assistance comes in that during that stage, it's, you know, really wrestled to the ground as far as actual feasibility and possibility. But I think overall, it's a, it's a great that, you know, I really do support working with the interested owners at this time.
Yeah, I can support this also and move forward with it. I do have a question. Does staff have the bandwidth as far as if these applications get approved? Do you have the bandwidth for, I assume you already have the bandwidth for the application process, right?
Yes, we've taken a look at the application itself and it does not seem like it's too labor intensive. And then if these sites are selected, one of the benefits is there would be additional assistance that the town and developers, you know, could take advantage of to help facilitate.
And I do think council member Thomas's sort of question about potential use of technical assistance funds for staff expertise or staff facilitation may be something we pursue as well.
Yeah, I would agree with Rosa. I think that the funding almost needs to flow through the town because you can hold back those funds and release them as needed instead of all the funds just going to developer. And then maybe the project doesn't come through. So I think it needs to come through the town.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. So so with that, I guess I that he, I, from my understanding, they propose that there's two ways, right? It either comes through them and they contract the services or they give it to the town. And then the town administers it. The thing I didn't hear when it with the technical was that it could go directly to the developer as a grant with no conditions, right? Like, I didn't get a sense that that would be, or at least for us, as far as our expectations is that we think that those would be better pipelines, right? But I personally want to share that I don't see, let's say they get entitlement, but then the fiscal nature of our economy changes, like holding a developer to execute it at that time instead of giving them the time and the due diligence to to understand the market and do it when it's appropriate is something that I would also want to give the freedom for individual landowners to be able to pursue at any time, right? Because the actual design, the approval processes, the thought that goes into them will always move the goals forward, right? It's not a loss. It's just a time lapse. Some of the landowners that actually own those sites have done that very thing. They had an approved building in like, you know, the 90s and they came back later with a modified design and had it approved. And it's a beautiful design, right? So, you know, I just, just, I'm wary of basically putting too many conditions on it where we restrict people. You know, it depends. If it's the town, you can make those kind of commitments as a private developer. That might incentivize them because they're seeing it's seen as a restriction of their freedoms to to do what they need to do for development. Just sharing like a thought on it, like, you know, why that might not might not meet all of our goals. And and if you'd like to respond to that, we're having a discussion. So I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, you know, and I I agree, I I I agree that in one of the things I think that is great about dealing with our town is that we are small and personal and people can come to us and we can make accommodations, reasonable accommodations for things. And we would take into consideration the economics of the time. For example, we wouldn't, you know, say there's another pandemic and we're not going to hold them to those things when then we change the date. Or we, you know, you know, we make an accommodation where accommodations should be. And I think that we're very good at that in this town. But I do not, I I don't want an opportunity for for, you know, corruption or, you know, swindling or, you know, fast, you know, dealing. I I just, I just know those things happen.
But that's fantastic. So from a policy and a directive for staff to operate under and like setting those expectations and guidelines and and allowing them to to navigate that process instead of setting fixed points and success metrics that they're held to is is like a great council position, right? That's on the record and and that could be something that then staff could listen to and sit into a a way that they feel like they have a legal structure to meet that expectation, right? Is would be the hope. And if they need more than that, as they dig into it, right? They would identify that to us. But, you know, thank you for that, for further discussion. Yeah, and and I too can would like to see that, like, like I had mentioned through questions, right? But it is that if any other developers or the town and correlation with other state programs for housing and other, you know, staffing plans and stuff in the future, identify that ability to maybe bring that on to the application, right? And consider that, like, is that something that we would want to consider and think about, right? Or or mention in it or pursue or or think about, or do we want to just kind of say it's these two and be done with it? And like, let's not think about that, think of it as an insular kind of approach.
Right. And we just real quickly on that. I mean, one of the things we did evaluate was the, there are the minimum qualifications in terms of the number of units that have to be produced on each of these sites. So it's, there are smaller sites that we have identified that aren't going to meet that minimum threshold.
Per site, but then not one of the collective two sites. There's a minimum two for the.
So there.
Maybe that's a question to Mark also.
No, I think it's, I think one of the ones that we were thinking of potentially, to your point, there is the property at 111 Lucky on the other side of the lagoon that theoretically could be one of those where down the road in the future, if we, you know, through this process, that maybe there's an opportunity for an addendum. And I, and it sounds to me also like there's an opportunity for us to come back to the council at some point. We're nominating these now. If, for example, and Mark, you can speak to this, that, you know, if funding was actually going to be granted, we could discuss actually the receipt of that money and the terms under which those are, the purposes for which those are being actually going to be used for at that time.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And but that's not determined at the time of the application. That's that we've provided these based on all the metrics. And then we go in, they're like, great, now we can have real frank discussions about what the needs are. And the needs aren't restricted through an application competitive. Okay. Or they'll compete, but in a different manner within that organization. Okay. Cool. So you have direction? Do you need an official kind of?
Yeah, I think that's great. We got the direction we need and sounds, you know, unanimous among the council with the comments that we've heard. And we can move on to the pro housing discussion. And Mark, you're welcome to stay stay around, but I wanted to do this one first so you could also opt out if you so choose.
Council would like to thank Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join. It was great hearing all of your input as well. So this is really valuable. So appreciate it.
You, thank you.
Okay, so as Adam mentioned, the pro housing designation is a program totally different from what we just spoke about. This is a program that was established by HCD in July 2021. And as of July 14th, 2023, there are 27 jurisdictions that have received the pro housing designation within the state of California. Six of those jurisdictions are located within the Bay Area. And to date, there are no Marin count, Marin jurisdictions that have been designated as pro housing. The city of Larkspur did submit an application to HCD, which was reviewed and there were comments on that application. And they have not yet submitted a revised application. So this is a program that was developed as kind of a, I guess, a carrot to provide incentives to jurisdictions to remove barriers and to create additional housing. So there are a variety of incentives that have been added, which essentially provide additional points or other preferences in scoring of competitive grants and funding sources. So there are three, three grants that have been identified where jurisdictions that are designated pro housing will received a preference in in scoring. HCD is also continuing to evaluate other incentives that they can add to jurisdictions that have this designation. Next slide. So to qualify for this program, a jurisdiction must earn a minimum of 30 points across four different categories, which include favorable zoning and land use, accelerated production timelines, reducing construction and development costs and providing financial subsidies. A jurisdiction must have at least one policy which in, within each of these different categories. And each category includes approximately 10 different policies that a jurisdiction can opt to implement. So it's essentially like a menu of options where you select different policies within the four different programs. And you need to meet the minimum of the 30 points. And each each policy, you get a max of three points and then a minimum of one point. Now, next slide. So these next few slides, just so some show examples of some pro housing policies in the four different categories. This is not an exhaustive list. Again, there are about 10 different policies within each of these categories. But this is just some of the examples of what a jurisdiction can can choose to do to meet that that minimum 30 points. So for under the favorable zoning and land use, some possible options are to rezone sites to accommodate 150% or more of the arena. Corredamadera is is not at this 150% threshold. I think we're around 140% was the arena in our housing element. That was was recently adopted. Another option is to permit missing middle housing, which are things like duplexes and triplexes in single family zoning districts. Or to eliminate or reduce parking requirements. Next slide. The next category is accelerating production timeframe, timeframe. So kind of increasing or decreasing the timeframe in which a housing. or decreasing the timeframe in which a housing project is is approved. This could include such things as establishing a ministerial approval process for different housing types, so ministerial processes remove discretion from the evaluation of a project. Essentially, a project would need to meet objective standards and if you qualify with that, then the project would be approved. It could also document that you have a practice of streamlining housing development in your in your jurisdiction and also have some permit processing for ADUs multifamily and affordable housing. Next slide. Third category, reducing construction and development costs. This could include such thing as fee waivers or reductions, reducing transportation-related infrastructure costs and also having pre-approved or prototype plans for missing middle housing and also for accessory dwelling units. Next slide. And the last category is providing financial subsidies, which includes such thing as trust funds or providing ADU grants and low interest loan programs to individuals looking to develop ADUs on their property. Next slide. So again, the minimum is thirty points and as as part of this, a staff looked at the the scoring worksheet, which was provided as an attachment to your staff report and determined that we currently do not qualify for the minimum thirty points. So in order to become a pro housing designated jurisdiction, we would need to add additional policies that have not already been adopted. And so staff is is recommending that this is, this is something the council's interested in exploring further in the future, that it would be a discussion at the upcoming strategic work session and as part of that, staff would return with additional information on policies and programs that we could explore to get us to the thirty points and what the associated staff time and cost would be to add add additional policies. Next slide. So these are the the two options before you, the first is to request that staff provide additional information on the pro housing programs at the twenty twenty four strategic work plan session, including information on the policies that could be explored and associated staff time and costs and also number two, to provide information and request that staff not pursue the pro housing designation at this time or as part of the strategic session. Adam, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, I obviously there's, there's not really the same sort of deadline or timing associated with this, so it's something that we wanted to come back and at least provide a little bit more sense of the structure of how you qualify and some of the benefits, which in my mind really are. You know, programs that aim that sort of parallel infrastructure improvements along with housing development, which I know, you know, was one of the things that had come up during the housing element process, of course, was related to roads and infrastructure and services that the town would need to provide as density increases and whatnot, but. And I just wanted to clarify that, you know, Martha was highlighting sort of examples of each category, but there's several other ways in which to get additional points as highlighted in the attachment. And so just wanted to come back and and provide a little bit more information, including the full qualifications process and the attachments, just for information. We're not here as sort of experts in the program from HCD and we don't have a specific speaker, but if there are questions, we could take them and then probably research them further and and come back at a later time, like we were talking about, beginning of next year and have a more robust conversation about that.
So we can open up to questions, can I ask a really quick one? What what number did we hit?
So somewhere between twenty to twenty five, you know, again, it's, we submit our application to HCD, it's reviewed and they may say, you know, we don't think you actually qualify for this program. I did hear from Larkspur when they submitted their application, they had thirty four points is what they submitted to the state and now they're below thirty points because they didn't think they met some of the the policy, so it's.
I appreciate setting a rom, so we have an understanding as we debate about whether staff should look at it, like how big a gap we're really going to have to get at, so with that, I'll open up to questions.
Well, I would just say with that, with the example you just gave of Larkspur, it sounds like you might want to submit with well over, so well over thirty points. So is there a chance of, is that possible anytime soon? I mean, not in getting it in soon, but is it likely that we could ever do that?
A little bit, I think, you know, some of the things. I think that would get us additional points and and Martha, please, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think a lot of them are things that we have at least spoken to in the housing element, implement, you know, implementation of our housing element, the policies and programs that we said we're going to do over the next eight years. It might be about sort of front loading and prioritizing certain aspects of that work in order to get us, you know, over the thirty and meet that pro housing designation sort of sooner rather than than later is how I look at it. And and we haven't done the analysis to say like how much staff time and effort and work that would be to get to that point, but that's something, again, that we could look into further and come back and have a little bit better sense of maybe we say at the beginning of twenty, you know, it's, this is actually going to take us two years to get to there, you know, if we start, even if we started now, because it's policy work, it may be new ordinances that we need to, and you know how how ordinances can take some time and and there need to be considered in public workshops and things like that, so it it's. It's, I think there's probably, you know, in implementing the housing element, we would get there eventually, it's just a matter of how much, how intensive of an effort we want to make and and the timing of that.
That that gives me an idea of direction, so.
Just couple, is there any reason, do you know why other towns haven't applied for this besides Larkspur?
I know that the county and Santa Fel both intend to apply, I think it it was in, I think it was maybe the county's housing element to apply for this designation, I think it's probably partly, you know, staff time and resources and other jurisdictions haven't yet had the opportunity to have the discussion at their councils as well.
Okay, and then does this affect, if we got approved for this program, does it affect the number of units and maybe you just use a Macy's site for an example, like right now it's zoned for X amount of units and kind of, does that mean that if we get this, they can add additional units or how does that work? Or does it?
So your your question is kind of similar to like the no net loss provision in the housing element, where if sites are developed at less units than what you anticipate, then you need to ensure that your sites can still accommodate your arena at all income levels, so I would assume it's something similar if one of the points, one of the programs you picked was you were at a hundred and fifty percent of the arena and then sites started getting developed under what you anticipated, then you would likely need to find additional sites.
But to to to, it doesn't require extra housing at each one of these sites.
No, it does not.
Okay, okay, thanks. That was it.
Yeah. Is it, is everything, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm wondering, you mentioned public workshops and I'm, I'm not wait, I'm not supposed to be commenting now, so my question is, what do we do to make sure that the community is sort of aware? And I mean, this is, this is different than Rena, where we were working to fulfill state laws, this is saying we want to go above and beyond and and really be proactive and I remember from the the Wind Cup development of Bell Mount Tam, that people didn't get upset until they saw the buildings going up. And so I don't, I just want to know what we can do to make sure we're bringing the community along in this conversation, I know we have very little turnout now, once we get to our beautiful town hall, I'm sure they'll all come just sit and listen, but what do we do to make sure that we're not getting too far ahead of our community?
Yeah, no, I think I I think that's a very appropriate question and if it's something that generally this council would like to pursue, that's something we could build into, you know, before coming back, at least in an educational session regarding what pro housing designation means and I and and, you know, I think it's fair, this is sort of comes with connotation, I mean, it's called pro housing, so it brings out sort of a sense, already a presumption of sort of what a community is saying, and I think that's intended by HCD to call it that. At the same time, there are very real carrots that are being provided, which potentially do mitigate some of the concerns that we've heard and talking about qualifying for infrastructure grants and things like that, so there could be a, yeah, certainly, I think we'd be open to holding an educational discussion and workshop on it and just sort of get the word out and see what information or comments we get back, I, you know, that I don't think we're ever going to get the full breadth of community participation that we might want to hope in that something like that, it's pretty wonky stuff, but at the same time, absolutely, that's something that staff would be willing to do.
Any other questions? All right, so with this one, you know, for example, in Lead, there's, you can, if you have questions about some of the points, usually can reach out to the organization to get clarification, right? So do they have a mechanism within that organization that we could kind of give that initial assumption and say, you know, not a full application or, you know, these are the, to get a sense of like what the realities of what the real ask is when we get into a strategic plan to consider, right? Like, is and would mean more impact and and effort from staff, just to so that we start with a good data set to make better policy decision, so.
There is an email address specific to this program where you can reach out to HCD staff and ask questions and as, you know, we reviewed this matrix of different options, there were some where we thought maybe we could get the point, it just kind of depend depends, so for those kind of things, we could kind of run by some of these ideas by HCD to see if we would qualify to have a better sense of where exactly we would be as as far as points go.
Yeah, I mean, they they want communities to sign up for this, so they're going to be very open to.
And yet they rejected one, right? So like the part part of it is.
Wanted to be legitimate of, you know.
Right, legitimate, so like, I think that, you know, sometimes you can be very ambitious, but you you know, like, and that's where it goes back to some of the comments I've heard from the other council is, we know our staff has reasonable expectations to meet the mark when we've asked them to do so, right? So we're just looking for an understanding of what that really means, moving forward, if we decide that we want that, right, to take that on and challenge that challenge, extra challenge for all of us, right?
And and there is a back and forth that occurs with HCD, when a jurisdiction submits an application, it's reviewed, they have comments, questions, and then a jurisdiction can resubmit to to address comments and possibly add additional policies if needed.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I formulate them, I can formulate them as questions or we could have a little discussion afterwards, so I'll wait for the discussion. So with that, is there any other questions that have come up? Nope, okay, so I'll close the council and ask, is there anyone that would like to speak? No, is there anyone online?
We have five attendees, no hands raised and no email public comment for this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close pub, public comment and bring it back for comment.
Thank you, sir. So I think the the question tonight, as I understand it, is pretty narrow, it's basically just, do we want to have this discussion in more depth at the twenty twenty four planning session? My answer would be yes, it seems to me like there's the the grant advantage that we could get seems really beneficial. If we look at the numbers that are in the staff report that other cities in the Bay Area have received, those are not trifling amounts, so I would definitely like to have the fuller discussion when we get to our next work plan and and figure out whether that path is right for us. As for the, I just wanted to touch on the the discussion about community engagement. The way I see it, the the pro housing designation is kind of meaningless in and of itself in that all it is is a recognition recognition of policies that we've adopted and if we choose to adopt those policies, they're going to be adopted through ordinances and resolutions that are all going to have public hearings and those are all going to go through, you know, the planning commission, the town council, maybe public workshops. So definitely always a supporter of transparency, can't have too much transparency, but I'm I'm pretty comfortable that if we do choose to go the pro housing route, as we develop the policies that are going to make that designation possible, we're going to have ample opportunity for public engagement and education, so those are my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I generally support the direction, I like the idea of moving slowly, not not racing ahead on this and let the community kind of catch up with us here, so supportive though, want to see it happen. Yes, I support working, looking at this during the work plan session. I like the fact that it, as Adam said, it will address some of the issues that people have with housing, that mostly being how it affects infrastructure and traffic and things like that, so it would be wonderful to have funds and answers for people who raise those issues.
Yeah, I can support it also, I think coming back to us for strategic planning for two thousand twenty four, I would like to see when you come back, maybe do like a cost benefit type analysis, so we know how much staff time is involved from a cost standpoint in it on it, and I assume that you may have to also prioritize how to get those points up to thirty, I'd assume you'd have more of a definitive, you know, I know you're between twenty and twenty five or so, but it's almost like you'd have to come up with some kind of a priority and again, it's going to tie back to staff time where if you do X, you can pick up three points, but if you do A, B, C, and D, you're only picking up one point, I would leave it to staff to figure that out, but you're going to have to figure out those priorities also. Thanks.
You know, it's weird, I get, I, my mind went a little snarky, right? Like, I'm like, okay, we're talking about what it means to be, you know, and so the way that Eli had mentioned it was like, to me, that sounded like the California distinguished school concept for housing. And I kind of like that, because who doesn't, how come there's a connotation, you know, like if we said that for the the town and honestly, like, we're not the city of industry, we're not the commercial district and financial district, right? We're a bedroom community, right? We're talking about if it was a pro bedroom like program, right? Like, does that, like, in a bedroom community, is that okay? Right, it's literally just the wording and then it really means, hey, we've done these policies based on how we all collectively agree on implementing it, can we please have a little bit more incentive for being good stewards of 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 humanity, right? Like, and so forgive me for the approach, right? Like, my, but like, that's some of the, to me, it feels like almost an absurdity to what I'm hearing it is versus the perception of what it is, right? Like, and and that's, that's just me, right? I don't say that it's absurd to anybody else, that's just how it reads across the board in narrative at, you know, newspapers, everything else, like the general dialogue, right? And that's where I struggle with it and and we can't just, we have to consider it more so screwed at a such a scrutinized level, right? But the realities of what we have always been as a town and that's where Jana Hell and others during that video spoke directly to what the foundational crux of this town was founded on in the forties and fifties when it was pro housing, right? So that, you know, I just wanted to say that and with that, I can support, you know, bringing some good data sets for us to review and consider and the impacts that it would have on staffing and the town and why we might want to do that moving forward.
Great. Thank you so much, sir.
Okay. So do you don't need anything else with that, so we can close item six A? All right, so six B is the consideration and possible approval of response to Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report dated June fifteenth twenty twenty three, build more ADUs and RX to increase Marin's housing supply.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a conflict of interest on this item, my business concerns building ADUs, so I'm going to recuse myself.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. The town has prepared a response to the grand jury report titled Billmore ADUs and RX to increase Marin's housing supply. to increase Marin's housing supply. Now, the report is dated June 15, 2023, and a response is due from the town by September 15, 2023. I first like to note that the town acknowledges the importance of ADUs and helping us meet our housing goals. They were an important contributor to the town meeting arena at all income levels in the prior housing element. And we have seen a market increase in ADU development in Corder Madera, especially over the last couple of years. In 2021, there were 24 units that were approved. And in 2022, there were seven seventeen units for ADUs that were were approved. So we we acknowledge their importance in helping us build more housing in Corder Madera. So the grand jury report calls for a response from the town to ten findings and six recommendations. And the town prepared a response to these findings and recommendations, which is included as attachment one to your staff report. As described in the response, the town agrees with five findings. And we disagree partially with five findings as outlined in that response. And of the six recommendation, one has been implemented. And one has not yet been implemented, but will be implemented in the in the future. There's one recommendation that requires additional analysis and several will not be implemented because they're they're not warranted. And I'm happy to go over the response to those various findings and recommendations if there are any specific questions from from the council on any of them. So the, as noted, the attachment one includes the response to the various recommendations and the findings of the grand jury report. And we're asking the town council to provide feedback, and it would be based on direction would be submitted, the grand jury report and a response would be submitted to the the grand jury. And again, the due date is September 15. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I'll close council questions and open it to the public. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Excellent. Thank you.
Question.
Could you turn? You have to.
In the agenda, it says the response is required by nine fifteen twenty-three. What happens if we don't respond? You're going to
So you have three minutes to make your statements and staff can address it. They will. Thank you.
That's my, that's my state, my
Excellent. Okay. All right. Are we, Amy, would would staff like to respond to that?
Yeah. You're resting.
I I'd have to say, to give a definitive response, I'd I'd have to look back at the penal code section, which does require every jurisdiction to respond. But, you know, they they are agency under the jurisdiction of the Superior Court of California, so I suppose we could you know, they would get a court order and require us to comply. So we all do make a very good faith effort to comply with the grand jury.
So I'm literally handcuffed here about answering as I Okay, so the general answer is yes, we're required to answer, and we should definitely consider that date as a a court ask, sounds like.
You can request extensions if need be as well. I know several several jurisdictions have have requested extensions and plan to. I mean, if council meetings are canceled, sometimes it can be challenging to to meet some of these deadlines. So they are accommodating in granting extension requests as
Extensions. Understood. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is there anyone online that also would like to make public comment?
We do not have any hands raised from the five attendees and no email public comment.
All right. So with that, I'll close public comment and bring it back for final deliberation.
I'll make this simple. First of all, appreciate staff on this stuff. I know it gets kind of wonky sometimes, especially with the responses, but I appreciate it. I'll go ahead and make the motion and authorize the mayor to sign the response letter to the grand jury and direct staff to send the response letter.
Oh, in a second.
Excellent.
We have a recusal from Mayor Beckman. So Vice Mayor Beckman, correction. So I will call the names of those present. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
All right.
Right on cue.
I just can't participate.
All right.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
So we have, it's eight o'clock. We have two more. Does anyone need a break or anything like? Okay, all right. So, yeah, we're going to power through. All right, here we go. Six C. To receive the Sales Tax Citizen Oversight Committee annual report for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This item is for the annual report of the Sales Tax Committee. And just for some background on that, measure B was the town's half cent sales tax measure that was approved ten years ago. And in that measure, it contained language that required mandatory fiscal accountability, which included requiring that expenditures be reviewed by an independent citizens oversight committee. And that committee is to verify and inform the public on the expenditures of the sales tax proceeds in accordance with the purposes that were set forth in that measure through an annual report. Then measure B was then replaced with measure F at the June 2018 election. And that new sales tax increased the sales tax rate from a half cent to a three quarter cent rate. And the same oversight requirements from measure B were carried on with that new measure. And as we do on an annual basis, the chair of that committee presents that report to you all, and she's here today. And over to Karen.
So our report, our three-page report is included in your packet. I don't need to read this to you. I'm here to present our report and also to to answer any questions that you might have. The one thing that I just did want to add is when I looked it over, is that when we passed these two initiatives, the one that we passed ten years ago, and then one again, five years ago, I don't think we really, particularly ten years ago, envisioned that these resources would be as important as they are now with regard to the town hall, building the town hall. So kind of just going forward whenever one of these things comes up is you never know how useful something is going to be or how, because I think when we passed it initially, it was just like, well, it'd be good to have some reserves and it'd be good to be able to do some things. But certainly ten years ago, we didn't think, oh, and now we're going to build a town hall. So in this particular report, which is 2122, not the year that we're now in, is that there's a million and a quarter that's part of the town hall a project. And then there's another over three hundred thousand. It's called lease proceeds. So I'm actually guessing that it's about a million and a half from the sales tax revenues that are contributing to the opportunity to have a town hall being built. So I just wanted to point that out. I think that's an important thing to note. That's one of the benefits of the sales tax resources. So if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
All right. Thank you for that. So is there any questions?
I have one. Go ahead, Fred.
I just have two quick questions. One is, I can't remember, because we're looking at 2122, but we just approved the 2324 budget. Do you know why there's so much of a lag? And I know there's rationale behind it. I just can't remember what it is.
You'd have to ask the money. Ask the money bunnies.
Well, so for 2122, the books actually close at the end of 2022. And actually, in this last year, I know we even the audits were a little bit delayed and came in a little bit later, I think, in the first quarter of 2023. So by the time we actually did that and then scheduled the meeting, we were already basically into the beginning of summer of I think when was our meeting? We had one meeting scheduled in July. I think it got pushed early in August and then
Yeah, our meeting, I think, was in the last, within the last month.
Right.
But you have the close of the fiscal year, and then you have audits. And so we're not able to do our activities really until the audit drill has been completed. So that's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. And I'll go back. I'm sorry. I'll go back to the main person. There's one item on here, transfer to other funds. It just says general fund fund for project management. It's like one hundred eighty-four thousand. Do you was that for town hall? Or do you know what that's for?
I I don't.
Is it just, it's general, it just says for project management?
I believe, actually, and and I'm you know, this is really a Daria question, but I I know we do include some of the project management. One of our public works staff members who actually manages all the infrastructure, project management projects is part of that. So I believe that's where that transfer is. I I know if we were going to make it related to town hall, or that would be in there. It's my assumption, but I I don't. That's the best answer I can give you at this point.
Okay, thanks.
I was going to flip it and say that it was the bail fund in case
In case you didn't respond to the grand jury.
Yes.
Just a quick question. First of all, thank you for your service. I know how hard you work on this and how you came up with the fact that the whole balance from a $2.8 million was off by $10. And I was like, wow, that's somebody who's really doing her homework. So thank you. And my question is, does the citizens oversight committee have any concerns about the way things are going? Is everything good? Is are you happy with how and when and why the money's being distributed is all?
In general terms, yes, we're satisfied and we're satisfied with our participation. Individual members have individual concerns about that oftentimes are related to their particular community, their roads and potholes. So sometimes those concerns are what shows up in our meetings, almost like they finally got an opportunity to vent about whatever it was. But in general terms, we're confident that the funds are being properly spent and nobody's going off the rails.
Thank you.
Technical term. Anything else?
Wait, so you spoke to the lease proceeds, right, which was about 300? So is that is that is that our lease, 99-year lease is folded into that or what? I'm just trying to understand what that what that was related to.
I think, and I'm not sure, because I was on the sales tax override before. I think it may be related to leasing of these offices. I believe, but I'm not
Oh, the temporary lease of this office, which we had established. Yeah, that's great.
I believe so. And I just remember, because I was used to be the liaison for sales tax committee.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, because at that time, we did work with Todd in establishing and approving that. So
That, again, would be part then basically a million and a half is coming from the sales tax
Well,
resources.
Because 300 is going out, because the the way I'd heard it from you, and it it, you know, forgive me if I was just my mishearing it, was that I almost saw that as an add to the total amount and the way it was described.
Proceeds is is in the normal course of events, that's not how we think of a proceed. We think of it as an income, not as an outflow, but
Okay.
Totally, it's a spent.
That's if that's the semantics of it.
Well, I was, you know, not to I wish I could have the answer definitively for you, but I do know that the infrastructure of town hall under that category, that's where we have put down the temporary offices and the and the sales tax expenditure for paying for.
Yeah, I mean, in this is during COVID as well, right? And that is also this this budget cycle. And so we were also working, it could be that if if that's ultimately covered somewhere else, we also were giving like extensions to some of the leases that the town holds to businesses that are in the you know, the the town commercial or like I'm just under, it doesn't ultimately, I'm just asking the question so that I make sure I understand it.
I'm I'm happy to get back to you on it. I think that's the best thing I can do.
Yeah, that's great. You know, it's just a report. It's not a there. They've scrutinized it. They're okay with it. So you don't even have to dig into it and report back. I just wanted to make sure I
They're not going to come after me and you.
Heard it correctly. Well, they're always coming after me. So but so 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 with that, is there any other questions? Okay. And I do this item, I will want to open up to the public as well. Okay. So is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment on this? Seeing none in the chamber, is there anybody online?
We have four people online, no hands raised and no email public comment on this item.
Okay, so I'll close public comment, bring it back for final deliberation.
I guess it's a little bit late, but there was one, there was a little line in this that said that some taxes from 22 were still trickling in. And I and I I understand how that works, because I used to own a business and we sometimes you pay your taxes a little bit late.
That's the way that is every year. That there are because the funds come through the state. And the state is the state. So I don't think I actually need to say anything further.
Explains it. Yeah. But are those 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 really aren't significant amounts, I would assume.
Because sales taxes are paid to the state and then the state has their algorithms and what have you and so on. And then we get payments and they do trickle.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, Eli had some statements.
I just wanted to thank you, Karen. It's good to see you. Thank you to you and your fellow committee members for the work that you do. And to your point, thank you for making the point that this is like really helpful, just as kind of a year-end review of reminding ourselves of all the important community priorities that this tax funds. So thank you.
Yeah, without this, there's a lot that wouldn't be happening.
Also happy to move that we receive and accept the report if that's required.
We don't require an official motion on that.
No motion.
Thank you.
Yeah, also thank you for your service and the and the whole committee. It's appreciated and, you know.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, we'll close item six C. And we'll move on to six D. This is to discuss the selection of up to two council members to an ad hoc advisory committee to provide recommendations regarding interior artwork, greenery and other building accessories for public areas of the new town hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is an item I wanted to bring before the council as I've been, as we're getting closer here to the exciting date where we're actually starting to think about these things, which is pretty exciting and amazing, just in and of itself. I will say, just so you're aware, we're well, I have in the staff report, the very end of 2023, construction completion, I learned today that we're probably back about six weeks from that. So just want to put that out there so everyone's aware and the public is aware as well. But nonetheless, it still is we're still nearing that end date and our public works team, our design team, Alton Construction, everybody's really working and charging ahead with obviously the important work of finishing the the building and all the the structural aspects of that. We've talked to the council at the June meeting about even ordering the furniture. So we've moved forward with all those aspects of the project, the interior fit out of the building. But there are, in my mind, there's a piece of work that I think is really important, but which actually I think is going to be a challenge for staff really to tackle. Not only because, as I mentioned, we're focused on other really important work, but also because these are very sort of I would say, you know, they're they're items I, I would say, you know, they're, they're items such as artwork, um, what pictures to hang on the wall, um, how to make this building real, really feel like a place and connected to the community that really should be, um, considered uh, by more than just staff and really brought in, um, others to that process and decision making. And so I thought it would be good to start that, uh, process with an ad hoc committee of the council who would be uh, working with myself. And then also, um, I, I wanted to not make this sort of a uh, sort of a, I wanted to define really the task at hand. And so engaged, um, our interior designer, who the council met at our June meeting, Rebecca uh, Udisay, um, and have a facilitated process that could help not only the town council staff and, and our community sort of come to some conclusions about how to um, I don't want to call it, uh, decorate, but it's really, it's really make this um, feel like a connected building to our community through images, artwork, um, greenery, things that really um, are going to be actually what I think a lot of people pay attention to when they walk into the building. Although, um, obviously the building itself will be a, a main attraction. So um, I'm, I'm requesting that the council select up to two, um, council members to be part of this advisory committee. Um, and work with me initially, certainly with getting this off the ground over the next, uh, five months or so. Um, and, uh, and then also work with Rebecca, um, in, in sort of a, a, a sort of a, a facilitated process to come up with some of these decisions. And, uh, I think doing that this is sort of a parallel process that when we do open the building, I think there's going to be a, um, already a um, some of these pieces in the building will, um, make it feel like home, put it that way. And and, um, I'm not putting, I, I, I think as well, there could be some ideas that come out of this discussion that help uh, help bring the community into, uh, the building on a ongoing basis. And I know there's ideas flooding around all of our heads, but um, there, there likely will be space for um, bringing in artwork from, uh, on a rotating basis from who knows wh- where, but, um, we can all think of, uh, ideas and, and and again, just think ways to make this special and, um, really integrate our community into the building. So with that, I'll, uh, uh, answer any questions that you may have, um, and, uh, look forward to the discussions.
Any questions? Uh, yeah, I see soon.
Uh, so, um, at this time, do you have a sense of how many people from the public you want? Or is this something you want us to think about or?
Yeah, I, you know, I think there's, um, that would be what I'd like to discuss. Um, I mean, obviously, if the council has comments on that tonight, that's fine. I, it would be something that I would like to discuss with the ad hoc committee and sort of think about how we and who is, is sort of brought in to help with that decision making process. So I don't.
Yeah, you have a, there's a statement here about, um, ad hoc committee with very recommendation and budgeted town council at a future town council meeting. I see the word budget, which sticks out my mind. Are monies included in the existing budget? Or is this above and beyond what we've budgeted for city hall or town hall?
Uh, so there is, there wasn't a specific budget, um, in the town hall overall budget for these sorts of items. And we're talking about, we're not talking about large amounts. I mean, if I, in thinking about this, I'm, I'm thinking of approximately in the range of twenty five thousand dollars, but we're talking about things like consistent frames for artwork, um, that would go up in the council chambers walls. Um, reproduction of some of the prints perhaps that we know we have archival materials um, that John is working on, that's going to go in the archive down in the lower floor. Um, so, so, uh, to answer your question, yes, it's in addition to um, and, uh, those discussions about exactly how much that would be and what would be appropriate would have to come back to the council at a future meeting to discuss, um, source of that funding and the overall amount, um, of the budget.
Okay. And same thing with the funding for the consultant, which I mean is between ten to twelve thousand. That's outside the scope of town.
So actually, there is budget remaining in the existing contract for Rebecca for approximately half of that, I would say. And there are additional we would, we would have to budget for in addition to what we've already budgeted for. So I think that's talking about additional, probably six thousand dollars.
Okay, thanks.
No questions.
Uh, my question is, and maybe it was in, maybe I missed some stuff, where are you looking for the council in, when we assign ad hoc, is it a nomination or is it a self identification and a vote like traditionally, is there any rules on the way that we would establish the two members for the ad hoc? Or is it just what we just determine?
I believe it's, yeah, it's just how you, you, you get to select that.
Cool. All right. Um, so with that, is there any other?
Are you, are you looking for volunteers?
Uh, well, we, right. So first we have to take public comment, then, then we'll yeah, um, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't a precedent that we had to follow, right? Outside of that, like um, so is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this? Seeing none in person? Is there anyone online?
Same people online, no public comment for this item.
All right. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll close public comment and bring it up so that we can identify two numbers. How would we like to do that? Would we like, is there two volunteers that just want, or three or four that want to throw up their hands?
I would love to volunteer.
Do we have a sense of the time commitment? Just for those of us that work outside of council.
No, I, I understood, understood. Um, yeah, I, you know, I, I think it's it's, um, the good thing is we have a facilitated process. So it's not like there's going to be, um, active participation in sort of finding the right material. Um, I think we're, we're going to be, uh, brought packages of material. But I do think, you know, I would say over the, over the five month, let's say four to five month period, it could be shorter if decisions were made earlier, but um, probably, uh, uh, one or two hours, probably a couple hours a month.
Okay, I, I can definitely do that if, if nobody else wants to, but if somebody else wants to, um, join Pat on this, um, they're more than welcome to. So.
Understood, yeah. Um, I think it's very important. I appreciate your, I mean, for me personally, it's just, um, would love to commit the time. Unfortunately, I love to commit my time to so many different things. So I, I'd be hard pressed to get to deliver to the service and expectation that I think, you know, would be due to that. Um, so we do have two candidates. So, you know, uh, do we take a vote then on those two? Or do we need a nomination? So just to, to be clear, oh, yes, ma'am.
I just want to ask a little question.
Yeah.
If that's okay.
So, um, do you envision that when this body meets, that it will be like this? It'll be public and no? Okay. Amy is like, no.
Well, uh, under the Brown Act, uh, there is an exception to, so an ad hoc committee, uh, a committee that is not a standing committee with continuing jurisdiction over the subject matter that consists of less than a quorum of the membership of, of the, uh, council is not required, uh, is not subject to the Brown Act's provisions. Now, that doesn't prohibit the committee from deciding to meet publicly or you know, bringing stuff, bringing, uh, recommendations back to the council and then hearing it publicly. So, um, I just, just you're not, that type of ad hoc committee is not required to comply with the Brown Act, because the idea is that it's just making recommendations to come back, but one can always decide to comply with the Brown Act.
I mean, it's not a concern so much, but just the, uh, about, but just how in, how people can input if they wanted to. Namely me, but anyway.
Wait.
They just.
Do you want to be on the committee?
No, you know, I, 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 I think just, I just have an idea, but I don't think I need to be on the committee to express it. That's what I'm sort of getting at, just like an, an input thing. So um, and, and I'm sure other people do too. I'm, I'm.
Right. So you're asking how as a resident, you can contribute to that, but you don't have the time and the commitment to basically see it from an ad hoc, but you want to participate within it, not as council, but as a resident. You're asking if that's a valid approach.
Yeah, I mean, and I think, like I said, I'm sure there are other ways to.
I can be a conduit as well.
Yes.
Okay, discussions, and we talk. Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. That's fine. All I need.
Yeah, I don't mind being an alternate Eli. If you get crushed on time, let me know and I can fill in for you. Because I get, I have, I don't want to say I have lots of time, but I have the time I can make, make for it. So if you need a fill in, um.
But yeah, I'm going to look to council to, to define that, whether that's.
I think we would come back if there was a, if there was a obligation that couldn't be met or, or time commitment that just became too too much, we could come back to the council at one of our meetings and select another member to.
So with this, I, I'd like to just make the official nomination and just have a vote, just to make sure that we're in agreeance, right? So I nominate Eli and Patricia, Pat?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right.
Okay.
And, uh, but please.
Council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Avasio?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, that closes our, uh, business items, right? And, uh, we're going to move to the council reports. Is there a town manager report?
My favorite drink.
Oh. Nice.
Drink soda.
That's good.
That's a drink.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of, uh, reports. One is that so happens that actually the, um, Department of Housing and Community Development uh, actually sent us our, um, official substantial compliance letter for our housing element, saying that we actually now are officially compliant, uh, with state law with respect to the housing element. So that's, that was good news again. Um, and, um, what was the other one we had just talked about?
The scan.
Yeah. Oh, yes. I would, I, we, we had mentioned, um, uh, before the meeting, but for the public and for all of you that, you know, we actually did complete, um, obligations that were um, stipulated by the court as part of a lawsuit about ten years ago uh, to complete a number of accessibility improvements throughout town. Um, through the hard work of our public works team, RJ, past public works directors and town managers, um, that has now been completed. And actually, up today, we got the signature of the uh, party that was, um, involved in that initial suit. So, um, we are beyond, we are happy to report that we are moving on from that. Um, and, uh, that's not to say we're moving on from making accessibility improvements throughout town, which we know is very critical uh, to the needs of all of our residents. So, um, those are my reports.
Thank you. Uh, town council reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
Uh, yes. So, um, I attended the, uh, Marin Healthy Youth, um, meeting last week. And, um, they're starting a campaign called Let's Be Average. Um, Marin County indexes two times higher than the national and state average for underage drug and alcohol use. And they set a goal that through education and action will be just average in five years. So, but knowing Marin, because they always overdo, will be under average in five years. So that's what we're looking forward to. And then, um, this earlier, I can't remember was the last, this week or last week, I attended, um, a building, a competitive US workforce from the Council of Foreign Relations and state and local officials. Did you probably some of you guys did too? Okay. Well, anyway, it was really interesting because it talked about how tech companies are working with high schools and community colleges to prepare people for jobs in the tech industry that don't require a bachelor's or a master's degree and pay between seventy and a hundred K. So, um, the mayor of Tib- of, uh, Sausalito was on and she was really excited about bringing some of those programs to Sausalito. So it's great.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. I did attend a Transportation Authority of Marin, and they wanted us to tell everybody that there's a real driver shortage of buses and that they pay twenty eight dollars an hour plus benefits, including childcare. And they're really looking for people to, um, sign up to drive buses. And they also, um, were very proud that the Smart Train set a record of attendance, even post-COVID recovery, um, happening, uh, thirty six hundred riders in one day in June. So they're getting a lot of bicyclists, a lot of recreation drivers, plus, uh, plus commuters. Um, secondly, um, the Oktoberfest was saved, uh, by, uh, the, the Cordero Madera Community Foundation. It was learned that the beautification committee didn't really have a, uh, legal standing. They weren't really an actual organization. And so taking out the insurance and working with the Lions on the liquor license and everything became a little precarious. Adam Wolf stepped in with his great expertise and helped the community foundation see that they could, uh, step up and, uh, actually be the sponsor along with the Lions. So thank you, Adam, for that. So Oktoberfest will go on. And the other thing I want to say is that the Parks and Rec Commission has agreed to put on a classical music community picnic in Town Park. The San Francisco Symphony Academy, these are the young people who are working to get into the San Francisco, uh, Symphony will be playing. Um, and it is a fundraiser, but it's free, um, thanks to a generous donation. Um, and that will be Sunday, September twenty fourth from three until six PM. And it's a bring your own picnic. So bring a picnic blanket and chairs. And for everyone who doesn't really like the really loud music in Menke Park, which has been getting everyone dancing in the streets, this is a more relaxed community picnic. So thank you for your time.
Thanks. I attended Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee. Uh, just one thing there, mark your calendars. October seventeenth, they're going to be doing a, um, homeowners insurance wildfire forum. Um, more to come out, out on that as far as the agenda. I also attended Marin Transit Board Meeting. Um, good news there is that Marin Transit received thirty one and a half million in federal funding. That's going to go towards electrifying buses and they're looking for a site, um, for the infrastructure to do that. Um, and then also, that meeting also was pretty interesting. There was a presentation, presentation by MTC on the Richmond-Sarah Fell Bridge. The short version of that is it's going to be a project where they're actually eliminating the existing toll booth. And they call it an open road tolling system. They're going to install that. They'll be going from, I think, seven lanes into three lanes and then two lanes into the bridge. And there will be an HOV lane, um, before that, that toll, uh, entry. That's the good news. I think that project isn't scheduled to finish until two thousand twenty seven. Um, so it's a little ways away. Uh, also attended age friendly Cordero Madera meeting. And again, Patty already mentioned this Sunday, we're going to honor those that are over ninety, community center. It is open to the public from two thirty to four thirty. And then lastly, to get a plug in, uh, September ninth is the Lions, um, EV and classic car show. Uh, we have about a hundred classic cars. We also have fifteen EV dealers this year. So if you're interested in a EV, um, come compare and shop because you're getting them all in one place in like a four hour period. Uh, music, we also have Amy's and also Pig and the Pickle. Um, and I think almost every Cordero Madera, uh, dealer is, um, in the show this year. So, um, planning on attending that. Thanks.
I've had a quiet month so far, so nothing to report, but I have like three meetings tomorrow and one on Thursday. So next month's report will be exciting.
I also had a quiet month. So with that, I'll close the council reports. Um, the discussion of the draft agenda for upcoming town council meetings. Is there any comment? So, except, yes, ma'am.
I'm, I'm just wondering, we had a, a public comment that I've been hearing about for a while about the issue of uh, people parking up on Cordero Madera Avenue and wanting uh, some sort of permitting for people who live there and can't park because it's a two hour limit. And I don't know whether that needs to be on the agenda or not, but it, I've been hearing about it for a while. And I don't know whether that needs to be on the agenda or not, but it, I've been hearing about it for a while and. You know, these are longtime residents who suddenly don't have a place to park their car because of the new. Parking ordinances and they're getting ticketed and, uh, just wondering whether that should be an agenda item or, or, or. And they, they were the ones who came in to talk, but they got here late, so just kind of passing on.
But they had submitted.
They had submitted a public comment.
Which is available online and so their voice was heard at the beginning.
Just wanted to throw that in the pot.
Thanks.
Okay, so staff will take that back into consideration and look into it and, and let us know. Alright, um, so with that, we'll close the, and adjourn. And we have no sanitary district too. It's been canceled, so we're done.